Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Monday, or for Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. Next on our agenda is to adopt this evening's agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to the, to adopt the agenda with one modification, or I guess two, to take items number four and five off of the consent agenda and put them into new business.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer. I guess that would make items four and five like items 11.1, 11.2, or something. We'll, we'll look at them after 11 then. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. The agenda is adopted. And we are up to the first item, uh, which is the approval of the minutes from the January 19th, 2021 meeting.
Your Honor.
I'm sorry, councilmember was that Demmer?
Yep, move to approve the minutes of January 19th, 2021.
I'll second that.
Motion by Demmer, second by Grisgoviac. In that one, I was just gonna mention that that was the minutes that were sent out to us with just the one modification.
Right.
Okay. Uh, any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And those minutes are adopted. Uh, so then our updated agenda, I have one, we have one, two, three, four items on our consent agenda. And the first one is item two on this evening's agenda. And that's to adopt resolution 21-31, calling for public hearing to vacate the right-of-way easement Foley Boulevard. Uh, this is as party of the Inoka County, or I'm sorry, as part of the Inoka County's reconstruction and realignment of Foley Boulevard, including the building of a railroad overpass. The county has requested the city vacate a portion of the city right-of-way in the area as shown on the attached map, so that it reverts to the county as an adjacent landowner. Staff has verified that the right-of-way to be vacated is no longer needed by the city. And the county will then transfer land within the area to be vacated, parcel 68, to the Met Council as part of the county's reconstruction of the MTC Park and Ride Facility. The county will retain slope and utility easements for the county, uh, city on the parcels transferred to Met Council as needed. And a vacation petition may be initiated by the city council upon adoption of a resolution by four-fifths majority. Resolution 21-31 calls for a public hearing on March 2nd, 2021, for council to consider this vacation. So we're, this section, we're looking to adopt resolution 2131, which calls for a public hearing on March 2nd, 2021, for vacation of a right-of-way easement for an area of Foley Boulevard. Um, next item on our consent agenda is item three this evening. Adopt resolution 21-29, the trust agreement approval. Uh, we have an attached resolution and trust agreement that authorizes the transfer of a trust established in August 2007 from US Bank to Further, which is confusing when that's the name of a company, just Further. For the provision of employee welfare benefits pursuant to one or more employee welfare benefit plans described in the trust agreement. Um, and this trust holds the city's health reimbursement account, HRA, contributions for eligible current city employees, past employees, and retirees. In 2020, the city transferred this trust from Wells Fargo to US Bank due to citywide banking change to US Bank. And then the city agreed to pay $7,500 in annual administrative costs for the US Bank trust. However, after the transfer was complete, staff was able to spend time reviewing other options. Further, again, that's the name of the company, has been our provider for the city's HRA, HSA, and FSA plans for several years. And they have an agreement with Matrix Trust Company. And the city entered into an associated agreement known as the Matrix Trust Company, Public Employee VEBA Trust Agreement, which is attached. All of this to say, there are benefits to both the city and the HRA participants by moving the trust to Further. The city will pay a $1,500 annual administrative fee, which is a saving of savings of $6,000 from the US Bank fee. And with Further holding the trust, the city HRA plan converted to a VEBA plan for the participants, allowing them to invest the money in their HRA once the balance exceeds $1,000. Um, so we're looking to auth, for authorization of resolution 21-29, adopting the trust agreement. Item six is to receive the 2020 year-end gambling expenditure report. Staff has received and reviewed the semi-annual reports for July 1st through December 31st, showing gambling expenditures within the city of Coon Rapids and trade area for the seven organizations at 15 locations. The combined net profit this period was reported at $305,918.52 with expenditures within the trade area, which includes the city of Coon Rapids, reported at $349,805.43. The reported expenditures specifically within the city of Coon Rapids for this period was $294,364.91. And the total combined net profit for 2020 was reported at $658,111.4 with expenditures within the trade area, which includes the city of Coon Rapids, reported at $629,904.88. And the reported expenditures specifically within the city of Coon Rapids for the year was $559,000. Uh, so we're looking to receive the gambling expenditure report for 2020. And then the last item on our consent agenda, Ida, is item seven. And that is to receive the lawful gambling report and authorize payment to Community Strength Foundation. The city collects 5% of all lawful gambling revenue generated within the city. And the city council has agreed to disperse 90% of the charitable gambling revenue the city collects to the Community Strength Foundation. In 2020, the total lawful gambling contribution to the city equaled $47,022.92, making the 90% contribution equal to $42,320.63. The 2020 cumulative fund balance for the amount the city retains from lawful gambling is currently $7,612.96. As authorized by state statute, these funds may be used for projects deemed appropriate by the council. So with this, we're looking to accept the 2025% lawful gambling payments report and authorize the expenditure of $42,320.63 to the Community Strength Foundation. And that's our full consent agenda.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
Um, move approval and adoption of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Carlson. Any discussion or questions about anything in the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the consent agenda is adopted. And we are on to item eight, under bid openings and contract awards. Uh, consider award of contracts for the 2021 well rehabilitation program and the West Water Treatment Plant Booster Four and Five Upgrade. Mr. Hammer, do you want me to read this, or do you wanna just get the highlights on this one?
Mr. Mayor, council, I'll go through brief highlights for you. This is our, our annual well rehab project. We, uh, added some booster pumps this year, um, trying to get in a regular rotation. Uh, things came back better than expected on the, on the well rehab project. We'd like to move forward with awarding that bid to Municipal Builders, Inc. Um, however, we received four bids on the booster pump projects. And there was a substantial error that was recognized on three of the four bids. So after consulting internally and looking through the numbers, uh, we're gonna throw them all out and rebid starting again this Friday. We'll come back to you, uh, three, four weeks with a recommendation for a bid on that project. Um, I think that's the highlights for you. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
All right.
I just was gonna note that the significant error was on the side of the, the contractor's bid and not something in the city's information that caused that error.
Nice clarification, thank you, Mr. Stemwell. Any discussion or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 21-7 sub nine, awarding a contract to Municipal Builders Incorporated in the amount of $206,755 for project 21-7, the 2021 well rehabilitation. Um, and can I also add into that motion that we rec, make a motion to reject all bids and not award a contract for project 21-8 at this time? Or do you want that, Mr. Brody, you want that separate?
I think it should be separate just because of the, the nature of that second motion.
Okay, so we will just go with the motion to adopt resolution 21-7 sub nine at this point.
Second.
Motion, uh, motion by Geisler, second by Ray Rower. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Councilmember Geisler, did you wanna take that?
I will continue on then, so I will make the other formal motion that we as a council reject all bids and not award a contract for project 21-8 at this time.
I'm sorry, councilmember Geisler, could you also authorize that we rebid that project?
Well, I, I can absolutely do that. And so we not award the contract at this time and authorize, um, the rebidding of the contract.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Second.
Uh, motion by Geisler, and I'm sorry, was that second by Carlson, or who was that? Oh, thank you. All right. Um, any discussion on that?
Uh, your honor.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, this councilmember, Demmer, and then this guy.
You, you, okay.
No, you, you go ahead, Wade.
All right, so, so my question was just to make sure we understood better what happened. Um, so, uh, we gave information to a subcontractor. Um, a subcontractor, uh, was in multiple of the bids. I just wanna make sure it doesn't look like someone who won the bid, um, doesn't end up getting it for some reason. So I, I don't, I don't know if there's any more detail you can give us to make sure that we, we understand what's going on.
Councilmember Denver, council. Um, basically, there was an electrical subcontractor, and there's a component of that in this project. So the general contractors, um, gather subcontractors together. That, that electrical subcontractor immediately recognized the error on their bid. Um, so we went to the number two person, and they said, oh, we also use that same kind subcontractor. Then we went to the number three person, and they also said, oh, we use that same subcontractor. So at that point, we decided, let's get rid of them all and start again.
Okay. Councilmember Grisgoviac, was that your question as well?
Pretty much my question, and you got to it. I, I actually wanted to know of the four, uh, bidders, which one bid it correctly? And that would be Pioneer Power.
Uh, we didn't go so far as to check on the number four because the way that, that they were already negotiating their way out of, um, you know, trying to do material changes, well, we can get a different subcontractor, we can do this. And at that point, it, it probably wasn't in anyone's interest to be paying potentially 150 to 200,000 dollars more. Um, so the, the idea is, let's just start fresh. I don't think we're gonna see that number, but we'll see when we get through the bidding. I think we're gonna find something in the middle.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor, maybe a follow-up question?
Councilmember Demmer.
Um, so now that everyone has seen everyone else's bids, does that throw this whole thing into disarray? How, how do you deal with the fact that now everyone's seen what everyone else bid?
Mr. Hammer, any thoughts?
It might be a better question for Mr. Brody. I mean, it's public information, we have to put this out there. Um, are they tuning in to see what's here? Maybe, maybe not. Um, I, I don't think it affects anything because they just know where their numbers may be, and they sharpen their pencils and get a little more competitive potentially. Maybe there's a better legal answer for Mr. Brody, though.
I think, nothing from a legal perspective, I think this is actually the most fair for all of these, those that bid on this particular project, rather than kinda going down the list. And we can't really negotiate with an individual one to say, well, what could you do it at? With a different elect, sub-elect, you know, with a different electrical contractor. So in terms of a legal perspective, this is the most fair and way to do it. And whether from a economic or competitive bidding, you know, what we get for bids next time. Like it, we will see, hopefully they will, as Tim suggested, sharpen their pencils and come in with a good number.
All right. Any, uh, any, any other questions or any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac?
Just the last thing, if we put this thing out for bids again now, uh, will we have results by the time our next council gets together in two weeks? Do you anticipate that?
No, councilmember Grisgoviac, we have to advertise for at least two weeks. So it's, it, we're, we're probably gonna lose about a month on this. Um, that, I'm glad you asked that question because I'm not happy about losing the, the schedule. Um, and so what, what we're gonna do is look at some of the lead items, some of the pumps that we're gonna install. And we might end up just directly purchasing those, getting those out now. Take advantage of some tax savings on that as well as there, there's like a 16 to 18 week lead time on these. And the longer we wait, the more difficult it's gonna be. So we're gonna evaluate pre, pre-ordering these, but we'll probably be back, uh, the first meeting in March with, with that contract.
All right, if you could.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, if you do take out elements of this bid, it would be worth noting when we review the next one, so we can kinda compare, but that makes sense, Tim.
Councilmember Johnson, did you have something?
Thank you, your honor. It, I'm assuming because it's going back out for bid, additional contractors can participate in the bidding.
That is, that is correct. It goes out for advertisement, any and all bidders have the same ability to, to put a, a bid in.
Thank you.
All right. I sorta lost track of this. Um, we have a motion and a second. Have we voted on it yet, or we're still just in this question, right? Then I didn't lose track, okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are on to item nine, under old business. Consider adoption of ordinance 2242 and ordinance revising city code 12-201 and 12-202. And this is the one that we introduced at the last meeting. And this is dealing with the, how we adopt the state building codes. Uh, does anybody need any information or updating from? I see Mr. Brody's, or Mr. Brady is here. Mr. Brady, are you in Coon Rapids, or are you, uh, you and, with you and Scotty?
Yeah, I'm across the border here.
All right. Um, does anybody need an update from Mr. Brady on this? No?
Uh, your honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
I would move adoption of ordinance 2242 and ordinance amending chapter 12-201 and 12-202.
I'll second that.
Motion by Demmer and a second by Johnson. Is there any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. It's easy, easy tonight, Mr. Brady, nothing to it.
Yeah, that's, I worked out the kinks in the last meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item 10 is to consider the 2021 workers' compensation coverage. Um, is that gonna be Ms. Hanson, or is that gonna be? Yes, nodding. All right. Ms. Hanson, did you wanna take the point through this then?
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes.
Am I unmuted?
You were. We could hear you, Fran. You have to unmute one more time.
I think your camera froze. Or else mine did.
I got it now, I got it?
There you are.
All right. Sorry about the technical difference, I'm not good at this kinda stuff. Um, this is to approve the 2021 workers' compensation coverage. Um, again, we are dealing with the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, which we've been dealing with for many, many years. Um, this year, we're finding an increase 35% um, across the board for the league, um, mostly due to, um, police, um, the police class. And that's due to the new, um, PTSD claims that they anticipate over the next several years. Um, and it's only a 4.5% increase for all the other, um, job classes. What this means to us is our, our premium increased to $784,550. Um, this is an increase of only 28% for us, um, due to our mod factor. And the mod factor determines based on our claim rate, um, if our increase is gonna be higher or lower than the average workers' comp claims. And ours is still pretty much in a good ratio of being low. Um, our mod factor is 0.74% this year, an increase from 0.68% last year. So it is increasing a little bit, but not enough to make our claims be higher than the average premium that the league is seeing right now. The city for many, many years, and, um, still this year, is going to choose what's called the retro plan. This plan, um, we're, we're, we're asking to pick option one, which means that we have a potential to have a minimum premium of only $228,588. But we would have a maximum premium of $1,156,310 if our claims are high. Over the past several years, we've taken this retro plan, we've gambled on it, and we have saved the city over $1.6 million. So we're recommending that we do the option one. Um, this means that we'll, the $611,090, and I mean, excuse me, the $784,550 for our premium. And then if our claims are low, they will give us as much as, um, $563,962 back if we meet, if we only have minimum claims, or we could potentially end up paying in an additional $371,760. Um, we're seeing that our claims are pretty good, and we're willing to take the retro plan again for 2021. So that's about all I have for workers' comp. I'll answer any questions you have.
All right. Anybody have any questions of Ms. Hanson on, uh, workers' comp?
Mayor, council, I was just gonna mention one thing related to our mod factor, which Ms. Hanson noted as being very low, averages would be one. Um, so if you're looking at the kind of the bell curve of all the insurance uh, for the league, you know, so the city's insurance trust, one would be right there in the middle. So 0.74 historically is a very good number for us. We've been in the 1.2s before, even recently, five or six years ago. Uh, we've had some, a number of good years of good claims, lower injuries, that sort of thing that brought us down. They do a kind of a three-year look back when they're assessing your next year's mod factor. And so that's something we pay a lot of attention to. We put a lot of efforts in from a, a workers' comp and a workers' safety standpoint. And so it's good to see that it's, um, staying low. Some of this can be a bit cyclical, so we'll take the good times certainly when we can get them. But we're also very conscious of, of, of limiting the, the exposures we have where possible.
Your honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
Um, I've had a question about the, uh, saving, you know, 1.6 million. Um, it, it looks, is, is that by picking any retro plan, or is that by consistently choosing option one? And, and the reason that I ask is because it looks like with option one, you have the, the highest minimum, but the lowest maximum. Are we finding, i- is that statement that we're saving $1.6 million a statement that we pay out a lot of things at maximum, and they would have been higher? Or is, is more of a statement of if we hadn't picked a retro plan, um, we'd be doing something different?
Councilmember Demmer, can I ask you that question?
Go ahead.
Yeah, um, over the last, I think, 10, at least 10 years, we've gone for option three. Um, so we've taken the highest risk, which means we pay the minimum premium, or we pay the maximum. This year, it appeared as though the, because of the, um, police class increases, our maximum shot up to the 1.7 million. In discussion with city staff, we determined that we weren't really willing to make that risk that high this year, so we opted for option one. If we would have, have just paid, to answer your other question, if we would have just paid the actual premium without taking retro, um, since we enacted it, um, we would have basically lost the potential of getting that additional $1.6 million back from the league. So that's why we keep going with the retro plan, because it's still been paying off for us. Um, in the years when our claims were really high, we did take a loss. But in, in, um, in, um, compilation of all of the years, it ended up being a savings. So one year maybe high, the next year low. So this is a compilation of the years since we've been taking the retro plan.
Okay, so that was, that, that makes sense to me. That's the retro versus not taking the retro. Um, you also, you also answered my question a little bit of why option one rather than option two or three. Um, but I, I guess the point to that question is our claims tend to be on the higher side. We, we don't have very many claims that would have only been 120,000, and now all of a sudden they're 220,000? Or is it just that that 100,000 is, is peanuts compared to the 1.7 million? I, ju, just wondering what the thought process is of picking the, uh, the, the one with the highest minimum, um, just to make sure we understand that.
Yeah, Mayor Council, I can comment on that a little bit because I, we looked at it as we're almost assuredly going to have more cost than the minimum premium even at the option number one level. And so the, the percent chance we'd actually save the almost $100,000 by going with three is almost zero. Whereas the chance that you might have a more catastrophic year and wish you had picked one over number three and saved the $600,000 is more likely. And so it was a little bit of risk calculation from that standpoint. Now, realistically, we'll have premium costs over the 220, but, uh, should be less than the even 1.1 million. Again, we don't know, it's February, there's a lot of year yet to go. Uh, but we felt more comfortable kind of capping our risk at the high end, knowing that the potential to actually save anything on the low end was pretty minimal.
All right. Anybody else have questions on workers' comp plan?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
I have a question, is, is the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust our real only option for this workers' compensation? And, or are there other cities that find this coverage elsewhere? And the only reason I say that is that high increase, uh, on the police side, and I would imagine if the city of Minneapolis is part of this league trust, that all of that is impacting these rates. Do we have any other options that they've all been identified and vetted?
Mayor Council, I can comment on it, Fran, if you've got any thoughts, uh, feel free. You know, I would say as far as workers' comp goes, this is ultimately going to be our best option. You know, most cities in the state utilize League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust. The larger ones are actually self-insured for things like this and have other methods. So Minneapolis and St. Paul aren't going to affect, um, those sorts of things because, um, you know, they're big enough to be on their own. However, i- it's a statewide challenge that the, once the state law changed to allow PTSD claims be considered workers' comp eligible. Um, this was a sort of avalanche of costs that cities saw coming, and the league has been building up for, for years. So even if we were going to find some sort of private provider, they still would be challenged with uh, covering the, the cost of PTSD claims. So the league isn't sort of more exposed as far as that goes. Uh, we'd have to find a way to do that. For some of our other insurances, there are, um, more options out there, but cities tend to go with this plan because the league operates it sort of in the best interest of cities. Isn't seeking to kinda take that extra premium profit into their, you know, back to their company. You know, they're sort of reinvesting in the trust itself and then safety programs and things like that versus a profit.
That's helpful, that makes sense. Thanks, Matt.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Item 10, consider 2021 workers' compensation coverage. Any other questions? All right.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
I would move approval of the staff recommendation for option one of the retro-rated plan with the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, and that we approve that.
Second.
Motion by Johnson. Was it a second by Demmer? Okay, discussion. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and that motion carries. Item eleven is to consider resolution twenty-one dash thirty, authorizing the 2020 and 2021 insurance renewals. Is that you again, Ms. Hanson?
Sure. Now that I'm unmuted, I might as well keep going. And this now is the city's property and liability insurance, also through the League of Minnesota Insurance Trust. This premium is pretty stable through the years. We don't see a real significant increase. There's many factors that would make it increase. Overall, the premium for 2021 is approximately three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred dollars, and that increased about twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars over last year. Mostly, our increase this year was due to just our experience factor and our claim history. A little bit increase in our experience factor because we had claims. It varies year to year, so this insurance hasn't seen a significant increase. As you probably will recall, those that were on the council in previous years, we did opt to do a five thousand dollar deductible for our vehicles, our life, including our police vehicles. And so with that, a couple of years ago, we did increase our premiums, and we have seen some savings from that, considering the fact that a lot of our police vehicle, not a lot, a few of our police vehicles do get totaled, and they do have significant damage. So we only pay about, we only pay five thousand dollars per vehicle to get it fixed or replaced. So it has, it has paid off for us to take that five thousand dollar deductible with a little bit of increase in premium. So that's kind of, oh, and also, I want to say that we also are doing the sewer coverage for the city, and that's also in a resolution here to continue carrying the sewer coverage. We did have two insurance claims in 2020 that benefited our citizens. They did get about seventy-five hundred dollars split between the two of them. So I'll take questions now if there are any.
I have a question, I think probably for Matt, or maybe you know, Fran. So we're insuring two hundred and two vehicles. And is that like, does that include like our dump trucks and our loaders, or is that a different policy on those?
I can answer that. It includes all vehicles. So yes, the dump trucks are included under that. However, vehicles that aren't licensed to be on the roads, like our dump trucks, for example, since you mentioned that, they do still carry the higher deductible. So the fifty thousand dollar deductible on vehicles, large vehicles, maintenance vehicles, our street sweepers, our dump trucks.
So basically, we're, oh, no, they're more than fifty thousand. Never mind. Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions on this?
Hi, Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
Move to authorize purchasing insurance renewal through the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust. Move to maintain statutory legal limits of one point five million dollars per occurrence. And move to authorize resolution twenty-one dash thirty, purchasing sewer backup liability insurance in honor of former council member Ron Manning.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion by Demmer and a second by Johnson.
The Manning Resolution. Should just call it that in perpetuity.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and that motion carries. And now we are on to item four, that got moved from the consent to new business. And that is to approve the contract between the state of Minnesota and the city of Coon Rapids for the ICWC program. And that would be to continue the institution community work crew program, which provides various maintenance and minor construction projects throughout the city. Matt, do you want to take whatever it was, why it came off of the consent agenda, whatever you want to cover?
Sure. Mayor and Council, and I can defer to Councilmember Ray Rower, who made the request of me. I did send out some information to council this morning regarding this program and sort of the genesis of it. It's a statewide initiative run by the Department of Corrections that allows prisoners to do work out in communities, typically public works type projects, they're trimming trees, they're shoveling sidewalks and that sort of thing. So it's a fairly common program that cities have utilized for a number of years. So I sent some information and just provided an overview both of the program itself and then how, how those crews were utilized in 2020 and the type of work they performed. So I'll stop there and then open up for council questions or comments.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
I move to table item number four to approve the contract between the state of Minnesota and the city of Coon Rapids for the ICWC program for opportunity for discussion at a work session.
Okay.
So.
Went without a second.
Well, Mr. Mayor, because if, if we, if I second and we table this, we can't have discussion until it's back on.
Right.
Um, so Councilmember, the one question I was, would ask is if, if there's some background to make sure, I mean, I'm not opposed to having the conversation at a work session. Just want to make sure that if there's any discussion we needed tonight, that we did that. Because if I, if we second, we can't have that discussion tonight.
Okay, I'm open to further discussion. I just have questions and concerns where I would like to have a little bit more information about the program, more specific information about the work being done, and then share some concerns that I have.
Okay, so then maybe my other discussion point would be for, for Matt. If we do table this, how quickly could this get on a work session agenda? And then if we do table it, you know, at what point, you know, because it looks like it would start in April one, do we have any ramifications or issues that, you know, if this pushed to a late February or a March work session, could we have information or a decision before the April one date, or do we have to give them an advance notice?
So I'll look to Mr. Hammer to let me know, but I think, assuming that the contract was going to commence in April. To answer the question, could we get this on a work session prior to that? And then still get it on to a council meeting for consideration? We can certainly do that. You know, I can move some things around in the work session schedule, or perhaps we can do something after an upcoming council meeting, something like that. So we can make that work if there's need to do that, and then we can consider it at one of the two meetings in March. But Tim or Mr. Brody, if you want to let me know if there's any challenges with that timeline.
Council, as long as we act on the contract in advance of April first, there shouldn't be any, any delays.
Mr. Stump, Mr. Stummel or Mr. Hammer, how many years have we been, have we had this partnership with them?
Well, I've been here for nine, so I can't tell you how, how many years that predated me. And that would be one of the questions I was going to ask is, I can get somebody here from the program, certainly from Department of Corrections, but if there is specific information that I should be assembling in advance of this work session, that would be helpful to, to know what that is. And I can certainly figure out how long they've been working for the city of Coon Rapids.
Have we ever, have we had any issues with these, with these workers? Or have we had any, any difficulties with them? It seems like they've always done whatever we've asked them to do, and I know that they, I know they like, do, they like being out of, out of jail and being able to do some work.
I'm not aware of any concerns we've had. We've actually looked at trying to add a second crew for a couple of days a week, because we get a good value. You know, we always hear the cleanups along Main Street and Coon Rapids Boulevard. And so they, they, they put a lot of manpower onto, onto jobs and get things done. So I don't have any concerns, and as I said, we were even looking to expand that potentially.
Well, Mr. Hammer, I can respond to that. My concern isn't in the workers or the job that they do. My concern would be more specifics as to the type of job and what the wage earned is. I want to make sure it's a reasonable wage, that they are working under safe conditions. Sometimes these programs can have a racial and social justice component because of the fact that we have, you know, a disproportionate imprisonment of members of color of our community. So I just want to learn a little bit more about the program and make sure that it's servicing both the, the workers and our community and everyone in a positive way. You know, I could change that to a postponement, if that would help with the timeline, just to postpone it to the next council session, just so I have a couple of weeks to learn more about the situation specifically.
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, to me.
Councilmember Geisler.
Um, I think it's totally appropriate, just like we had the, we tabled the, the, our historic bridge repair, you know, to have some other conversation. And I'm happy to, you know, when we get forward to second the motion so we could table. I just wanted to make sure that we had some little conversation about what we needed to talk about, what staff needed to put together. Because if we got that motion done, our conversation would have to cease. So if we can have that conversation, if we can continue, you know, to gather information about the program, put it on an upcoming work session, that to me would be great. So at that point now, do we have to have the motion restated, or can I just second the motion now?
Well, I just want to make sure that everybody is clear. So right now, we have an agenda item up for action, and our choices tonight will be either to table it, if that's the action the council takes, or to take action on the ordinance, if that would be the decision council takes. So I think that you should probably start with the motion to table, if that's going to be the choice.
Make them secure.
Yes, so.
Councilmember Rower.
Thank you. I make a motion to table item number four, the approval of the contract between the state of Minnesota and the city of Coon Rapids for the ICWC program.
I'll second that.
It's a motion by Ray Rower, and there's a second by Geisler to table. There's no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, so I don't know how many that was. Was that like five or something? One, two, three, four, five. Okay, opposed. Two, one.
No.
All right. Okay, that, that is tabled then. And we are on to item five, which is to approve the memorandum of understanding with Anoka Hennepin District 11 for the Police Department's support. Chief Wise, did you want to take the point on this one, or?
Well, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I think I can, actually, I'll just provide, I guess, an overview of the memorandum of understanding, and then maybe we'll circle back to questions or issues that might pop up. But just to give a little detail, actually, if you, if you, if anyone read the memorandum of understanding, it's a very well-written document that includes a lot of deliberate language, and that language comes from District 11 itself, meaning it's District 11 that's requesting from the city police services, and that the police services they request are listed throughout the documents. The history of it is, is that this agreement started in nineteen seventy-four, so forty-seven years. District 11 has asked for police services from the city of Coon Rapids. They refer to it as school resource officers. We, on the police side of things, we refer to it as detectives that are assigned to the schools. And then just for the way Coon Rapids does this, is that the detectives that are assigned to schools, it's considered a promotion, and it's a competitive process from within, where the officers apply to become the detective assigned to the school. It has, it includes an interview component, where school district staff participates in the selection of the officer that goes into the schools. And then the school makes a specific, or there's specific guidance that's hashed out from year to year within the school on what, what role it is that they expect the detective to play within the school. It ranges, it's not simply limited to law enforcement. In fact, it's probably a smaller component of what the detectives do in the school. Frankly, it's mostly child welfare issues or family welfare issues, along with safety and security of the building, including training of both staff and students and other pre-planning for events. And it's not hard to remember certain catastrophic incidents like Columbine or Sandy Hook or Marjorie Stoneman Douglas. Those represent a component of all that, too. But anyway, their assignment is as an overview of all safety processes within the schools themselves. In addition, then, it includes contract services for DARE, which is our drug abuse resistance education. And frankly, over time, that program has morphed fairly substantially, where the focus of the program more is about character education, which is in alignment with the school district's vision for character education for their students. So we considered a partnership with the elementary schools, wherein our officers get a chance to interact with fifth graders and, and talk about resisting peer pressure and, and situations like that. The DARE curriculum is easily available on the internet, and, and people could see what services that we offer to the school. So then just specifically, this contract refers to a detective assigned full-time to Coon Rapids High School. And that person also splits its time with the regional high school. We also have a detective that's assigned to Coon Rapids Middle School, one assigned to Northdale Middle School, and the other to the River Trail Learning Center. And I'll say that we have an outstanding working relationship with District 11 staff. I have a great working relationship with David Law, the district's superintendent. He's somebody who calls me on my personal phone when he has issues that are related to school matters, not on, on a non, or an infrequent basis. And the relationships that this contract represents are indispensable. I got a chance to play a role in the Fit for the Future Task Force, based on an invitation from David Law. And I'd like to think that, that my presence steered a lot of the, the project related to the remodeling of Coon Rapids High School to make it a much more safe building than it had been prior. In addition, the relationship that the DARE officers, that they build with fifth grade students, is, is invaluable to us. I can, there's no other way that a police officer could interact with young people in such a positive way than, than physically being in an elementary school. So I guess that provides a basic overview of them, of their request for service that District 11 is making of us, and we're happy to, to offer the service to them. And I guess I should highlight that, that the contract value is listed as three hundred thousand dollars. And just so the, any citizen watching, the source of that funding comes from a special public safety levy Um, and just so the, any citizen watching, uh, the source of that funding comes from a special public safety levy. That the school district has, they they have a million and a half dollar levy roughly uh year to year that that um. State law dictates that they spend towards safety efforts within school buildings itself. So that's the origin of the contract and um we're grateful that that levy exists and we're grateful for the positive relationships that we've built. With both our school principals and with the district superintendent, so any questions, I'm open.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
Um, Chief Wise, I I just had one question. Um, with the officers, you know, I know that in the thing it said clothing that that we should. Require clothing and uniforms, this and that. Are are officers that are in the school in full uniform all the time or are are there more casual? Um, outfits that they can wear to to be um more integrated with the kids? Um, can you tell us, talk about that?
Yes, I can. The um, the DARE officers that are in the elementary school that interact with the elementary school kids. Of all grades, not just the fifth graders, those folks are in full uniform. Our officers or our detectives that are assigned to the individual schools, the middle schools and the high schools, they wear casual clothing. Uh, most often, especially the high school, a detective almost always wears Coon Rapids Cardinal logo attire. Um, frankly, because they become indoctrinated into the school's culture and that's the way they want to be. And so the, like I said, it's a competitive process, meaning the detectives that go into those schools are there because that's where they want to be. Uh, they want to work with kids, they have hearts that are geared towards uh making a difference in young people's lives. And they take it very seriously. Um, and I would encourage any one of you to speak with the principals. Of the middle school or the high school and ask them what they think. Um, I I assure you that they'll all have very positive things about the role that the detectives play within the school and how important they are to the school culture. Um, so yes, they're in soft uniforms when they're when they're in more of a law enforcement role, when they're strictly in the teaching role, meaning DARE, then they're in uniform.
Chief Wise.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
Oh, okay, thank you, your honor. I forget that part. Um, I did, I called a couple of people today and everyone just had great things to say about the SROs or school resource officers. So I wanted to share that with you. Um, can you share with us the collaborative process for how the officers are chosen for the position? You mentioned um that there's some collaboration with the school on that decision.
Yeah, um, yeah, I'd be happy to. Is that like, uh, for instance, we just, we just had a changeover for. Uh, Coon Rapids High School where a a new detective has been assigned to the school. So the way we do that internally is we we post the the promotion internally. Um, patrol officers who are interested in the position throw their hat into the ring. It winds up to be a formal interview process and that formal interview is conducted by usually a couple of command staff. Uh, meaning captains within the police department and then usually the principal, so Annette Ziegler herself will sit in on the interview. And so um, and the three of them will conduct the interviews and then the three will agree. On which person they think is the best fit at that time and that's how the selection is made.
Okay, your honor, one more.
Go ahead.
Um, so the other question I have is um, how do you determine each year that the services are beneficial to the school district?
All right, well, that's a, that's a good question. I guess it's presumed, given that the district requests us to renew the contract. Um, that said, we provide the school with statistics on what it was on the activity that we performed. Uh, sometimes it's just basic law enforcement duties, like taking theft reports from students that have had things stolen. Um, but a significant percentage of them are things that maybe the school doesn't know about necessarily upfront, such as. Um, children in need of protective services or crises that occur within families. And the relationships between the officers and the school really help streamline the process. Of knowing more about individual students to try to make a difference in their lives. Because in the end, our our goal, everyone's goal, and it's written in the document itself, isn't to get kids in some sort of corrective environment. The idea, the whole idea behind the program as a. Generally speaking, is to avoid that, is to look for opportunities to intervene in a young person's life, to make a positive difference. Um, to build them up. Um, that's what we're looking to do by being in the school.
I appreciate that, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the chief?
Your honor.
Councilmember Carlson.
I, there's no way I could express it as eloquently as a chief wise. Um, and I can't speak for the police department, that train left the station about three and a half years ago. But I can speak a little bit on the topic. Uh, twenty-seven years of my career was spent working in the schools. I was a DARE officer for eight years and after that I was a officer assigned to the schools at a Coon Rapids Middle School for nineteen years. And I'll just tell you just briefly about my experiences, I could go on all night to be honest with you. But I've had adult, now the first kids I worked with are now forty years old. I had a lot of those kids getting a hold of me during the campaign saying. You took care of me, I'm taking care of you. I found support with a lot of those kids. I've helped young adults who I met in the schools fill out job applications. I've been referrals for them for the military. I've had them call me out to go talk to their kids. The program, yeah, there is some correction that goes on with the program, but it's a very, very small degree. Most of it is about building relationships, relationships with kids, with their parents, with the schools, with all the other entities that serve kids. That's just my two cents.
Thank you. Almost sounded like a motion, but I guess not.
I'll make the motion, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one memorandum memorandum of understanding for school liaison and preventive program officer services. With Anoka Hennepin School District Number Eleven.
I second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Ray Rower, discussion? If I could figure out how to share my screen, I'd show you the picture that I've got of Councilmember Carlson as a DARE officer with my daughter. Uh, about twenty years ago or. That's true. Um, all right, hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed and that motion carries. And we are on to the open mic portion of the meeting, if I'm keeping track here. Um, Mr. Stummel, anybody or Mr. Erickson, anybody for open mic?
Mayor, council, there is nobody on the attendee side of the meeting, so we're clear to move to the next one.
All right. Then item twelve is the open mic response for Ms. Catherine Koffer on Dogwood Street. Um, she spoke at the open mic portion of the December fifteenth, two thousand twenty meeting. To express concerns related to safety awareness for the Burl Oaks Estates neighborhood. She contacted engineering staff during the fall of twenty twenty to request a stop sign to be repl- to be placed. Excuse me, at the intersection of Dogwood Street and one hundred nineteenth Avenue. With no other requests to consider, at the time, the traffic review committee engineering staff conducted the field review necessary for stops on requests. The traffic counts were collected over a forty-eight hour period and a crash history review over the past five years was conducted. Intersection visibility was also reviewed in the field. Both the traffic volume and crash history data, as well as the observed intersection visibility. Indicated that a stop sign was not warranted at the identified intersection. Um, we've got a, we've got a a attached technical report that was provided to her on December ninth, two thousand twenty. And she later followed up with the engineering staff to express additional safety concerns. And staff explained that the next step would be contesting contacting the Safety Commission. Uh, the Safety Commission met on January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. To discuss several items, including the concerns, after additional review, the Safety Commission did not recommend. Installation of a stop sign at the intersection of Dogwood and one hundred nineteenth Avenue. Staff will continue to work on additional educational opportunities to inform the neighborhood of safety measures related to pedestrian and driver awareness. And if anybody is interested in what those additional letters are, they are in this evening's packet and you can go to our uh city agenda for that. Item thirteen is another open mic response uh to Mr. Wayne Schwartz, Hundred Fourth Avenue. He appeared at the January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one city council meeting. And asked council to consider organized waste collection services in order to reduce the garbage truck traffic in neighborhoods. Uh, the most recent significant significant review of this topic occurred in two thousand five and two thousand six. After the city council directed staff to research organized waste collection. During this period, the city began the process of considering organized waste hauling. However, the matter became very controversial in the community, that's an understatement, and with the waste haulers. The city council decided to redirect their approach towards a zoned waste hauling system, which was ultimately implemented. And the zoned hauling system includes five separate areas within the city and determines which day of the week waste is collected. In an effort to reduce the negative impacts waste collection can have on a neighborhood and public transportation. And then there's a few other options, cities have organized waste collection, including um, anyway, there's. The Mr. Schwartz received the letter with all of the uh various options and again, that's in our agenda if anybody wants to read all the rest of that. And that concludes our other mic business and we are into other business. Any other business to come before council? Do we know how the community parade is going tonight? We're right in the middle of Snowflake Days. And tonight was the first ever community parade. They were doing some food collections, so it looked like a a great opportunity to do some uh. Uh, safe participation. Mr. Stummel, have we heard anything?
Mayor and council, I, well, I just got pieces of the live Facebook feed, it looked like at least the staff were having a lot of fun as the. The parade was getting underway and uh at least at Crooked Lake, looked like they did collect quite a bit of food at the first stop, so. Uh, the goal with tonight was kind of three main stops with anybody along the route could stand outside and deliver that food to the trucks and cars as they went by. Uh, there will be another parade on the other side of town on Thursday evening. All this information will be found on both the city website and right on our main page, main page, and there's a Snowflake Days website as well. There's a whole bunch of other events that are occurring as a part of Snowflake Days, all been modified to sort of meet current pandemic um environment and restrictions. So I would encourage people to check that out because uh at least I shared it with my neighborhood Facebook page and. I got a lot of excited people, just especially those with smaller children who found they can actually go and do something tonight and check out um the parade with their family. The other thing I was going to mention in our other business is uh the front door program. Yeah, application is now available, the deadline is March first and so that's a really neat program uh for folks that um. Aren't familiar with it, it's an opportunity to apply for some city resources in order to help you spruce up your home. So I would encourage you to check that out if you're interested in um uh doing something to your home this year. That's it for me.
All right.
Your honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
Um, hey, just a little bit of a shout out to a citizen and also a request maybe of Mr. Hammer. Um, the other day I was driving by Aspen Park, which is near my house and it's a set of baseball fields, for those that don't know. And I have a parking lot along Foley that often is used as a meeting up place for people who are commuting and things like that. And uh, there were a couple of vehicles that were high centered in the snow in the parking lot because we'd had a big dump of snow and that. Parking lot doesn't get plowed regularly and so I guess the one request I got from um a citizen who was. They're helping pull one of these vehicles out as I was helping to snow blow the other vehicle out and create a path so they could drive, drive out of there. Um, was, uh, would we consider putting a little polite barricade up just so that people don't unintentionally drive in there? Uh, since it's not being snowed, I think it caught them the both by surprise. But as I was uh snow blowing one person out and this other pickup truck was pulling another person out, dragging them out with a a tow rope. Um, when we got done, I went over to the citizen and I said, I said, hey, I'd like to thank you for for helping out one of our neighbors uh getting out of here. May I have your name? And we're both wearing masks and, you know, big jackets and everything and and he said, oh, I'm Paul Johnson. And so little did these people know, they had one city council member and a former city council member helping them get out of the parking lot. Um, but I wanted to thank Paul Johnson publicly for um continuing to provide a great um public service to the citizens of Coon Rapids. Um, he he was extremely helpful, he even drove his Prius home to get a truck. To come back to help this young lady out of the parking lot, so thank you, Paul.
So that was my question, I thought, I don't even know where you have a tow hook on a Prius, but. All right, um, any other business to come before council this evening? Okay, then.
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Demmer, who was that second? It came really quiet, quick.
Pat Carlson.
Pat Carlson, motion by Demmer, second by Carlson to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we are adjourned.